From here up to Woodspreek.
Convert land that you want by your own agency. I know in the UTE to each other because that land.
However, there is still a lot of unemployment. Young people are still unemployed. There is selfishness, but there is ample land. Because if that project that is being run, the cattle farming project isn't working, they could do something else with that land so that our youth could get job opportunities. Because it's all in the mind. If you don't think positively, you will not succeed.
And then we have mines. We see by the vula, by the vala, but what I see is a disaster because there is no tarot, but mineral. They still take it from the railway to coast.
We also have mines. They open them and they close them. But I see disaster because there are no proper roads in that area.
A social labor plan they don't implement. Just check the mineral and go away.
The reason I'm saying this, if you want to bang in the research about boog, I deny to say there is no job.
Each job you must plan, you must have a strategic plan. And my researchers, I believe, as such, our own agency, a community, not me. Youth, how they can help the youth? Because there is plenty of land. It needs to be planned.
But if there is no planning, it means that we'll still suffer. There will be no jobs for the youth. Because there are a lot of researchers who might be brought in to look at what other opportunities for economic development might there be and exploit those. It is not happening.
To me, it seems as a red tape because the reason I'm saying so, you can find someone running bigger business. Tomorrow you find him with the youth. He's investing there. So to me, to make the example, I'm old. So let's give the youth a chance.
Give me low. You can find a gene, you can beg at the hip, like you can find a corner, a red tape. No, but I'm sorry, I'm not going to move. But what I want to do is to make a city. Let's see if you can move. But what I want to do is to make a city. Let's see if you can make a city. Make a city. Make a city.
Each and every stands in a three hectares. But now, it's only trees growing there. If they were putting maybe bohols, people plant vegetables, that can be much better than getting nothing.
You can see three hectares standing there. You can see a pool. You can see a flower, a maple, a maple, a lot of fruit. You can see that you can eat it. You can eat it.
So, if we fight hunger and poverty, that can be good to me as an old man. Thank you.
You can see a pool. You can see a lot of water. You can see, later, you can see, you can see a lot of water. You can see, you can see a lot of water. You can see a lot of water. You can see.
Okay. As long. You can see a strict animal. You can see a lion. No, but. I'm going to go to the limbo. But. You can see a lion. You can see a lion. You can see a lion. But you can't see a lion. You can see a lion. In king, you can see a lion. 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 Now, you can see a lot of water. Now, you can see a lot of water. You can see a lion. 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 But you can see a lion. You can see a lion. You can see a lion. Five minutes. Maximum. Oh, cool. Five minutes. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go five minutes. You can see a lion. 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 But now, you can see a lion. You can see a lion. But you can see a lion. 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 I'm going to go. You can see a lion. But you can see, pretending to be a lion. You can see 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 a lion.
Do we still have any more hands?
Okay. Now, Baba. Now, Mama.
We have.
We're going to go five minutes.
My mother there. Let's please stick to that five minutes.
Now, Mama. Now, Baba.
We do have another gentleman at the back.
Five minutes with.
Let's just stick to that five minutes.
What's a man?
Please do come forward. Mama.
I greet you. I greet everyone in the house. You can see a lion. You can see a lion. You can see a lion. We are very happy to have received this invitation from parliament. We are very happy to be here today. You can see a lion. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss this bill. You can see a lion. 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 My humble request is that as the elders relying on this state grant, if there should be any monies or levies to be paid with this law that we are discussing today, may we not pay those levies? Because you all know that our grant is too little. And even if we do get the increments, we only just get an increment of twenty renz. That is my humble plea. Thank you. Greetings. Thank you for this proposed amendment bill.
Yeah. Just to add, maybe, let me add one.
On what we can also add on this?
My license application fees for BE people in the last twenty-seven years. If maybe, seeing a bugle, you can see, I'm not going to be poor for the sake of afford to apply for my licenses. I'm going to ask you.
Okay. We would like to make a submission that we look at the amount that is paid for the issuing of licenses. We have seen that in the past twenty-seven years, black people continue to struggle and we are not in a position to afford those fees.
Yeah. We beg to ask you, you can see, a company is not licensed. It's a history of over fifteen years. You can see where we are in terms of financial constraints in this sector. The pricing is a fine in a company that is hundred years old versus to a company that was under apartheid and then only started after the ANC government, after nineteen ninety-four, where we were all free to do anything. Whether it's in the pipe gas, if you're not importer, you follow afro, you follow it, you know, you're fine.
So I guess.
In other things, you can see a grant after ANC government and you can see a different incentives that government came up. But when it comes to the economic changing situation of where we have to change the economy by paying for these licenses, we are still equal. And I have to say for ten years, to apply importer gas because of what is required by the department, by SARS, by all these things, whether we are exporter, whether you manufacture any product within this space, you're fine. If we can be looked at, you can see, how about we give a certain discount for our licensing? If a company that is applying meets certain BE requirements, not only a percentage, but by even checking if it's not a front? Because there are so many fronts.
I think she's emphasizing on the issue of a subsidy, if there's a need to subsidize the previously disadvantaged participants in the sector. And then number two, issue of regulating the fees and grading in terms of the businesses. Because there are businesses who are already established in the sector, but they find themselves as developing businesspeople, paying the same amount as those businesses. And I think it also creates some kind of a hindrance in terms of the development of their businesses.
You can see, after I issued my license to some businesspeople, the department, the budget, you can see, you can see, what are you in for? Because if you want to apply, you can see, but I want a background, I want a vision. And you can see, my license, I only want, but only one or two companies are serious or can even afford to put up this establishment, be it a depot or a storage facility.
I think that they should be monitoring done when it comes to the issuing of licenses to check if the companies or businesses who have made their applications are fit for purpose. Because it doesn't help that there are a lot of licenses issued. But then when it comes to understanding the business, a lot of these businesses, I don't know where to actually begin. But they have achieved or acquired the licenses because now everyone was in that space putting in their applications.
I think, as a developing country, we took over all these acts from the past government in the last whatever, two hundred or four hundred years, whoever the explorers, whenever they settled in Africa.
You can see, you can see, you can see, you can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
Basically, you can see, the department, like the department, minerals and energy. If you want to educate, you can see, you can see. Because, I understand, from the traditional leaders level, where our communities are, there's no understanding of what is happening. Because in the last twenty-seven years, we were trying to sit on the table. But for my communities that need to understand why we need to have cleaner energies, why we need to move from coal or using mixed-use power generating gases, they don't understand because of the information gap. You can see, eighteen fifty. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. But you can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. So let me ensure to our balance.
Okay. There is a need for civic education in the sector. We need more black people to understand how the sector functions because of the gaps, of the imbalances of the past. Thank you.
You can see. You can see.
Let's, five minutes. Please stick to the five minutes. Thank you.
Comrades, I was sent a law amendment to we must make sure that we enhance environmental conservation since the address of my social issues. You can see, we must identify my problems. You can solve our problems. You can create our businesses. You can create more opportunities. You can create more opportunities. For instance, example, you can see, you can see, the environment, because of climate change.
There is gas that is polluting the environment, leading to climate change.
And I can see, you can see.
And I don't think that we've made mention of that fact.
Methane gas. Methane gas. You can see, my landfill site.
That is found in the landfill site.
You can see, you can see.
It seems as if we are not paying attention to it.
Yeah. You can see, a record of decision between mineral resources and environmental affairs.
There should be a record of decisions from their parties.
But when they decide, you can see, my landfill site.
And then they must resolve that we no longer want landfill site.
Solutions.
We do have solutions.
You can see, my flaring of gases, my landfill site.
There is flaring of gases in the landfill site.
Currently is under category C of number fifty-four of nineteen ninety-eight.
You can see, Solomon Teto, nineteen ninety-eight.
Where you just register and then you flare that gas.
You can see, you can see.
Yeah. If they can flare that gas, you can see, you can see, your environment. And if we flare a gas, you can create more opportunities.
Flaring that environment would greatly assist in conserving the environment and creating opportunities of employment.
The solution, you can see, problem, make gas, you can see, totally, my landfill site. Methane gas, I see, it's thirty times more than carbon dioxide in contributing to climate change.
Methane gas is not a gas and it is contributing greatly to polluting the environment.
You can see, there are extreme waters because of your limited gas. You can see, you can see. And you can see, you can see. This is because of coronavirus. You can see, climate change. You can see, it's not. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. So the gas imported, you can see.
We need to pay attention to this gas because it has led to the catastrophe that we currently see, the unpredictable weather conditions and the outbreaks of these pandemics that we can't explain.
Another option. You can see, you can see. Let's do anaerobic digestion. Anaerobic digestion. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
You put all the waste inside. You make sure, you can see, you can see.
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can produce a limited gas. This is, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
So that gas can also work as a biodiesel.
Yes. So, I see, because, you can see, landfill site. You can see, you can see.
So there really is no need to take gas to landfill site because we cannot then be able to monitor it.
Yes. I see, another solution.
Let's create those solutions.
And then create more opportunities.
And the job opportunities. And solve these problems of unemployment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
San Banan.
Greetings.
I feel, I'm not going to say.
I really do feel a bit shaken.
You can see, you can see.
I'd like to greet everyone in their respective positions.
You can see, I'm from thirteen in Matsulu.
My name is Tom San Masego. I'm from what thirteen in Matsulu.
I'm from Matsulu.
I come from a family of the men of the cloth.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
I'm the youngest amongst them.
You know, it's because of this thing. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. It's because of this. You can see, you can see. 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 Yes.
You know, whenever I accompany these ordained men of the cloth, I normally go to these meetings and I see these dignitaries sitting there and we sign the registers and we eat the food.
Why, you can see?
Why am I saying?
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
In these engagements, there's a lot of money wasted. We sit here, then we have refreshments and we'll never see you again.
You can see, you can see.
Because now it means then we were here for compliance.
So, you can see, next time.
So I'd like to appeal that next time. When you come to us.
Your vision, your clear.
You must come with a clearer vision.
Purpose, you can see.
And a clear purpose.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
Because now, you expect us to sign.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
Because now you're leading us to believe that once we have signed, then this law is going to help us and create opportunities. I don't think that is right.
Why, you can see, in my feasibility studies and then you can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, where are we coming from? And then where are we now? And where are we going? Then you can see, you can see. Where are we coming from?
We need to do these feasibility studies so that we can understand where we come from, where we are and where we need to go so that we can also sign freely.
You can see, it's because of this thing. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. What has happened? You can see, you can see. Along this period, you can see, you can see. Why are we here? You can see, you can see.
What are the loopholes? Because we hear that you have seen the loopholes.
Okay. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, you can see.
When these meetings are conducted, it is very imperative that we must have an agenda.
You can see, it's because of this.
So that we have an order of proceedings.
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. And then you can see, you can see. And then you can see, you can see.
We are expecting that the one who's chairing this meeting will give an overview of the vision of this meeting.
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You understand? You can see, you can see.
It doesn't really help us that we ask people to raise their hands. Why are they raising their hands? How is it going to assist us?
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
In conclusion, like to request that as the government.
Every time, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
Do.
You can see, you can see.
At this. Proposed amendment to the bills. So that we, so that you evaluate them when you come to us so that we can also decide if we want to sign or not. Thank you.
Okay. Now, as long. You can see, you can see.
Thank you very much. When you do go to a place, you don't actually go there to hear what you want to hear.
You can see, you can see.
You just go there. Even if sometimes some of those things don't sit well with you, you just have to listen.
You can see, you can see.
Thank you. Firstly.
You can see, you can see.
You are not obliged to sign.
You can see, you can see.
Maya, if you don't like to sign, it's your right.
You can see.
Secondly.
You can see. You can see.
As we are here now.
You can see, the social development.
There's a social development committee.
You can see, you can see. You can see, children's, what, what? My amendment bill.
That committee is responsible for dealing with children's amendment bill.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
You know, I like to be clear.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
Secondly, also have Mr. Suella. He was clear when he was standing there. He said, before I can air my views, can I then be clarified on this?
You can see, you can see.
And we explained to him and I furthermore said.
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
Now that we have explained, then he can take on his points.
You can see.
Now here's a problem.
You can see, you can see.
The government cannot make a law without having consulted with the people.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
You see, now I know this.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
The committee group came here and said, I am a person who is directly affected and here are the issues. Please solve them.
You can see.
There was a lady here dressed in white.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
There was a gentleman here with a maroon cap and a green t-shirt.
You can see, you can see. You can see, you can see.
We wouldn't have known the points that they raised here if we had just assumed and then gone ahead and made the law.
So, you can see.
We go to the people.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
We go to the people with the law.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
And we source their opinions and their feelings regarding this law.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
It is not possible that we can be everywhere.
You can see, you can see. You can see, I'm from Matsulu.
The reason why we find ourselves here at this point, it's because issues of gas also greatly affect people in this area.
You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, I'm from Matsulu. You can see, you can see.
So let's not mix issues. So let's not mix issues. We are not eh one of those groups. We're not here to solicit your votes.
Letani mbono zenu, gokwano umteeto hulmena tufunukuensa.
We are only here to say, give us your opinions, your inputs regarding this law that the government would like to pass.
Asal komikunisogdali umteeto kanga izwalenenzwa, kuto before kshayumteeto ka okuyosis zivosa band.
Let's be honest.
Akwazi gubalika, lukyo laleli is zivosa band.
Let's be honest, I think that we are not used to this consultative process because it was not done before.
Norma, norma ngenzekibengasho. Lesu zidastana ngayo zemitene na na kuti yenzane yenzane. Asquazu baneka lukutu sizo lalela. Nomengenzekuta ikulumi ngalendo. Goda lendo ai shilo namshange sihamba nati sesasas kuti, na imbono yaban eh mini ekon.
You know eh, that gentleman there who came and made a presentation around issues of methane, it might not be that his eh presentation is relevant but there is something that we have learned around what he has proposed.
So resinga tabanma bezo, kfanomu daches esoglegalele esotikuen. Angyabona makela nukaregi lubusuti, why you songlegalela?
So we must not turn down help. If a person comes and says, I'd like to help you, accept the help.
Shonipabantu, ngoba ekuneni lamteeto zo chindabon.
You also need to respect the people of South Africa because this law has a bearing on them.
Goda esiyakolisa, ay. Oberega, esiyakolisa, mta neko sumanga besibene ekala. Goxo gsozis zivosa bandu basen bombela.
So as you have put it, we would like to take this opportunity and apologize for coming to solicit the views of the people of Mombela.
Sizo tige, masa shlangene, asikola na pe. Umasa shlangene sitoka, umu umbonile zangishe sizi intanga nezashuke nezese politik, sizo biyale komiti.
You know, once we have.
Zonge lesu zisho ngabantu, siysho. For instance, umfo etula payane benze kuluma ngendaba i transformation eti. Lum lumteeto, uyabonu yamnigas hulmeni kunya lutangensititis. Goda ngogo pegagwa, are we addressing the transformation gule gas in that?
You know what we're going to do, once we have consolidated everything, we'll sit down as a committee because we are not here to represent our eh 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 different political parties. Like that gentleman, what he raised here on issues of transformation, we also would like to consider those.
Zininga, ngenge gisbale zining, gubanya viveschela na wutu tzele licensing enzwa ngayo. Abanya bascheli lukuti, anpe gukuti yin ishitwa ngokfana. Uma ngabe siyakule in that, so sotitwa ngokfana, sicha chimali zifana yu, gunabadu dalababa ko. Imbono le yabana, ibalu legile.
These are people's views that are being aired here today. We've also heard about issues of eh how they are treated in the industry despite being new compared to the old industry players. These are the people's views. They are very important.
So siyaboga ngakulu bana basen bombela.
Thank you to the people of Mombela. Don't worry.
Siyaboga ngakulu.
Thank you.
Sikavanga kuti susuzel kulu nati so tumas talk.